All the needed order, do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Tell where I'm going.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of all with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Ro Paul, please.
President Dom.
Here.
Vice President Emmerich.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman, absent. Trustee Wadore.
Here.
Our treasurer, I'm sorry, Secretary, uh, Trustee Lady.
Yes.
Trustee Durick.
Here.
And Eva.
Here.
Dave. Sean, that was, some might excuse, said he's on vacation. Okay, public comments number one.
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Okay, thank you. Nobody here in the room? All right. Dave, are you up?
I think so.
All right. We never let it talk.
Five minutes, right?
Yeah.
You got the stopwatch going?
Yeah.
You don't want to mess with him.
Yeah.
All right, so we're just gonna go over a brief overview of last year's program, real quick highlights, and then what we need from you tonight is consensus to drive the directives, which you will see next month. The reason I'm in front of you tonight is because Brenna was double booked. She's presenting to the Women in Agriculture workshop tonight. So you give me another year to do the hunting program. Yeah, we had a record harvest this year, 250 deer were harvested. There was also a record waterfall harvest, so a lot of happy hunters out there. The district had record revenue as well. Page six of the report is where your financials are for the hunting program this year. And it was around 63,500 for revenues. We had 6,800 of direct expenses, and then our staff benefits and salaries around $35,700 for implementation, which provided that $20,0950 operating income for this year. The economic gain part there, the $197,000 would be the cost of the district to remove that many deer, so that's the benefit of the hunters on site. And that's based on our fee of around $700 per deer when we do our culling. So that's where that figure comes from. And then also in there is the volunteer contributions specific to the hunting program. We just kind of separate those out for that economic gain figure. One thing that's important for the board to consider, specifically when they get into some of the recommendations, is this year the state came to us and notified us that they will no longer be doing CWD management in McHenry County due to the increase in prevalence, excuse me, the sustained increase in prevalence of CWD in McHenry County. So anything over 5% prevalence, the state has ceased CWD sampling. So essentially, it's on the county, the hunters, to do any type of CWD management. Excellent.
That's the wasting disease.
Correct.
Chronic wasting, correct.
This, this figure here is based on the retreat. So as the board is aware of, I think Elizabeth communicated that a couple months ago. We went through the book, Good to Great, and this is the figure of the hedgehog concept. So it's identifying what you're passionate about, which can be the best in the world at. And then the third circle there is supposed to be what drives your economic engine from the book, but in the public sector is really the resources. And the hunting program was developed by hunters, very passionate about hunting, but it was developed within the context of the district in promoting conservations. Because there are non-residents, there are all who that helped develop the program, and that really improved the program. If it was just made by hunters, it wouldn't be as good as it is today. As far as what we can be the best at, I believe that our hunting program is the best public hunting program in the world. I have been involved in a lot of different public hunting programs, and that we're certainly the best in the region. All the other hunting programs in the region are modeled after the district's program. But it's bigger than just hunting. It's really providing the best user experience and connecting people to nature. And that's really what the entire district is about. And it's just hunting is one component to connect our people to our resources. Now, if you take a look at that last circle, the resources that we're dealing with are really our people, and our people are an expression of the conservation district. They support the district, they just voted to support the district this last fall. And then our hunters in general are also providing their time. We talked about the economic game, but we've also created this six-stage of hunter development where they're ambassadors for conservation, and we have conservation hunters that are dedicating their time to improving the resources, dedicating their efforts to stewardship outside of hunting, giving back to the district. And really, it's about our capital brand, and hunting program is a component of the brand of the district. So it's with this perspective that I'd like the board to take a look at some of the recommendations that we have for 2025. Specifically, we'll go right to that 80 Bullets, that's the one you're probably gonna have some discussion about. Until this year, we've always tried to have a program that was equitable to all based on residency, so not having preferences, difference between resident and non-residence. Well, five years ago, we started to have more preference to residents, providing them additional preference points above non-residents. And this year, the committee is recommending not giving any extra credit to non-residents for not being selected to the deer programs. And that's because of how much demand there is on the deer programs. Uh, we still believe that there doesn't need to be preference between resident and non-resident for the waterfall program, because we accommodate all those people. But deer in particular, there's been about five years where residents are not getting a spot due to the amount of non-residents. So what this will do is there will be a revenue reduction. Because currently, uh, the non-residents are paying double what a resident is. For the archery program, I, if our non-resident is part of a family, they're likely going to be able to get in as long as they have enough non-residents. But a full group of non-residents is likely not to get in because of how much demand there is for this program. For the firearm hunt, since they are individual applicants, a non-resident is gonna be at the bottom of the list. So if there's so many non-residents, excuse me, so many residents that fill all those spots, non-residents are never gonna be able to get into that program. The other part there is the half a point for buck harvest. Currently, we incentivize deer harvest for population management, and specifically for female, because they're the restrictive population sex. So we've not given points to bucks previously, males previously. Uh, but we want to provide a half a point because of the CWD management on its incentivized harvest overall for that disease management. So that's probably the biggest thing that is gonna need to be discussed here tonight. Just roll through the rest of them. We are proposing to add a archery zone at High Point. Uh, previously, we did not have a zone there for the last couple of years because of some restoration efforts that were happening there with our stewardship program. So they've moved through, they've restored that area. So bringing back High Point and then removing Queen Anne for some restoration efforts there. Adding a dish, an additional zone at Queen Anne Prairie for the spring youth turkey hunt. That, that youth turkey program has become quite popular, and there was some youth that weren't getting zoned because of how many people were applying. So we tried to find a location that we could have one more zone. Waterfall adjustments at Pleasant Valley Glacial Parkers, expansions of zones to provide better opportunities there. The removal at Kishawaki Corridor is because of our conversion due to the Coon Creek project down there, where we're converting it from agriculture to prairie, which is a grant. Remnants, so removing that zone. Each year, the firearm hunts rotate back and forth between first season and second season. That's just to maximize our exploitation of the herd, so you don't have just first season impact, second season impact over time. So just rotating those. And then the nine-day hunts are just updated based on new dates. We talked about the eighth one, the clarification of closures. There's still some confusion about closures specifically for Kishawaki Ballard Road, which was down in the southeast part of the county. And all those closures are in the western part of the county. Somehow, during a rule at one point in time, we left, a rule change at one point in time, we left, uh, scouting, the orange hat while scouting. So we still had a lot of hunting, we wanted to make sure that it was while scouting as well, so that we're identifying the hunters when they're revealed for our officers. If they see somebody walking out there and there's orange hat, they know it's a hunter. The last one, again, because of that youth turkey demand, we wanted to allow siblings to hunt together. It was previously a one-to-one adult mentor to youth program, but if they were siblings, we wanted to allow that, and then have the parent or mentor go that relationship. So those are recommendations for this upcoming questions.
So with the state backing out,
Yes.
what initiatives are you taking to try to improve the health of the herd specifically?
We incentivize harvest, uh, and then, and then with this preference point modification, that is, that is our attempt to try and incentivize more harvest and provide points to lottery for harvesting, not just females but males. But we've, we've tried to do through our programmatic rules, CWD management as well. I'm just letting you know that the state's not gonna be doing anything, so it's all on the people.
I know, okay. So it makes it more challenging in general, that's, that we might have more disease here in progress.
Listen, they referred through the comments for the pages and pages of them. They're overwhelmingly positive. I don't understand, but some of the themes I saw, several of the archer guys were talking about being able to hunt at ground level instead of, you know, stand a tree stand. What are the thoughts on that?
We've, we've talked about that almost every year, and there is, uh... When you communicate to a non-hunter that every trajectory is going right down, every discharge of an air war boat is going into the ground, there's a, there's a comfort level to non-hunters when, when we describe that. So it's really an added factor of safety. Our program has multiple factors of safety that are additive, and that's what makes this, makes this program great. Uh, so that, that's one of them particularly. Uh, we do consider ground lines if there is an accommodation needs. So if somebody not physically do that, then we would work with our officers to have a location that would be safe, uh, but it's not a, a good blanket. Rule change specifically when you start talking about in the southeast part of our county where this hunting program takes place. And you probably also read all the comments of hunters walk, excuse me, public walking out into hunting zones. So we know that that interaction takes place and never want to place our hunters in a situation where, uh, something could go wrong.
Yeah, one of the comments relative to the pedestrians, you know, walking through, said there should be more signage or something to let, to let pedestrian, non-hunters know that, that hunting is going on. So I don't wonder what our efforts are there, but...
I, I can assure you that we place a lot of signage out there. It gets taken down, it's walked over, it gets moved, it gets ripped. Uh, what we try to do, working with our sites and fleet staff and also our officers, is, is identifying all those entry points and notifying the public as much as possible. We do know that it's ignored.
But again, that's the comments overwhelming, for positive. Kudos to the program.
Yes.
The populations, I think you do it first for a mile or for so many.
Mm-hmm.
How did those come out as far as are we, are, were there a lot more deer this year? Or how, how does, how does the count this year compare to past accounts?
Did not fly this year, so I honestly did not look at the data. Did anyone else see it? I have not looked at it. I can get that back to you.
Of course, like I said, I've seen more deer this year than I've ever seen.
Yeah.
I was, I was an election judge on a primary day. I, I saw a herd of deer, 12 deer cross Fairway at Redtail. And then last night, coming home from the meetings that we had last night, there were six of them.
And they're all...
Yeah, they're just thick. That's why I'm...
Oh, yeah, they're looking at you. It looks like they're looking at you too.
I'll have, uh, I'll have Brown on that information.
Appreciate that, because then that also affects the disease, uh, you know, issues too. You have overpopulations, does it, does it also affect the numbers in any way that can be hunted or should be hunted on sites or ever?
We...
We just don't have a location for...
They're, they're everywhere, and then during the fall, there's a lot of mixing that takes place.
Sure.
So I, I personally don't believe that you can apply enough pressure just based on how our landscape is, is spatially laid out.
In other words, we're not gonna overhunt it.
No. Not do it.
And at the same time, we don't have to do any culling. We don't have to hire anybody to do culling, or, or do we still?
We, we would evaluate Lake in the Hills then, because our staff has evaluated that site and not feel it is feasible to safely have our, our public hunting program at that site. So that's one that we have done, and that's where the figures come from for the economic gain is, is based on our culling costs.
Right.
So we have done that, I think last time was two years ago. But we evaluate that based on vegetation, the deer impact on the natural.
Are there any other groups that you can work with as far as monitoring the deer population or any of the harvest or any of that stuff?
As far as...
You used to work with the state a little bit, or no?
Yeah, so they used to, when they were more invested in CWD management, they would fly and we'd be in coordination with them. We'd try and get them areas that we knew there was high prevalence and high population. But that, I mean, it's our neighbors. Education was gonna be a big deal. Harvest as many deer as they can, not trade refugia, that's a big one. That, that we see some neighbors create food plots, don't harvest any of those. All the deer are on those parcels and not able to be hunted. And that creates massive populations in these bikes. So making sure that the public know that this is important. So it's a tough one though.
Any other questions?
Just one about when the numbers get so great, would the state offer more permits or...
There's, there's no restriction on permits, supervised, many able to carry next.
Not like it used to be?
Yeah.
Where you were in a lottery and everything else. That's okay. Which is good for hunters.
It's a good one. So, so the big thing we need is consensus on these recommendations moving forward. And then the big one is gonna be not providing any preference to non-residents. That's a, that's a shift, programmatic shift.
Do you have any problems with that?
Do they sound like liability waivers? Like where does that go? Okay.
Yes.
So this will be next month. It's got on, uh, it's just for presentation tonight, and it's gone into practice, but we, we hold off, and the board will take action. We'll be on the consent agenda next month.
Right.
More acceptance of the directives. And now, now this month's report on Tuesday night is just accepted with our...
It's signed, it's...
Get that the report, but the directive will be, so you have time to consider if there were any concerns with the specific directive.
Gotcha.
Now, where, where the residents are, where the non-residents will be cut off, is that the combined, the combo license, or is that for kind of...
Both, all of our, all of our deer programs, so both our archery combo and our firearm program. So the archery combo, we, we got rid of the rule that you had to have a defined number of people in a group. So we only provide credit up to three individuals. So if, if us three are non, are residents and we have one non-resident friend, we can still get all the points of the resident group and have a non-resident friend hunt with us. There's, there's examples in, in our program. The reason we kept non-residents as part of it is a, a kid will move away and still wants to come help his family or be overseas on deployment and come back around Thanksgiving. We have a father who lives in Lake County, and his kids and ex-wife are in McHenry County. All these different things are, are reasons that we've had non-residents in the past. The archery program, I think that you can have your one-off non-residents in a group, and they'll still be able to get a spot as long as they're with residents. The one that it could impact is the firearm. But our, our highest demand program is that archery program. And they can firearm hunt in the combination part of that archery program.
Um, consensus, I think, was in general, that program is very successful, so, you know, probably would, I have a problem.
We have to like to bring a lot of favorable permits.
That's our consensus.
Before, yeah. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, uh... Elizabeth, the executive reports?
Uh, new business of the, for Tuesday night? Anything for discussions on our agenda?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So there are several things, I think 14, uh, things on the consent agenda. Everybody gets to look at them. Do we want to go down the list? Is there any questions? And one of them, uh, number 13.6, which is probably reported, we just, uh, going to accept. And that, uh... Pretty much everything, the sport letter for Hack Attack. The Snowville Grant, uh, it's helping on that, that was... It's good, the Snowville Club should be happy with that. $30,000? Yeah, can we get... We got to enter government agreement with, uh, Crystal Creek Beach Restoration Project. Some repairs on the R and Stair Project over at Prairie View, which, that Stair Project, I think, has sort of been looked at for a while, I think. Didn't see it done. Irene, any, any comments or questions?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we want to go ahead and review the consent agenda, so we'll keep everything on. Okay, you got any questions before we can pull it all this far? Now we'll go to the executive directors of the board, I'm sorry.
Terrific, that's okay, wonderful, thank you. All right, um, we have Congressman Schneider will be visiting us tomorrow, and there's a group of us, President Dom and Trustee Zeller will be joining us, and... And your peers will be out there to show them the special project site. As you recall, we have two congressional projects, one in the Chakowskis District and one in Schneider's District. And so he wants to come out at this point. The funding has not come through because at the federal level, but really wants to come out and see what the actual impact would be. And of course, I'm sure Beck ate on the importance of having those funds restored so this work can take place. So, um, we'll be having a good day tomorrow in that regard. Um, so...
Excuse me, on, on that work, that was pretty much the flooding of that area. And the issues we had was impacted by the beavers and stuff like that. That was, that area, is that...
That is the area, it's 30, and Dave, you could probably talk to us more.
Yeah, yeah, I'm shocked and looking.
34 acres of removing invasive brush, a lot of fallen trees and blockages that needs to be taken place. Obviously, the impact would be to help decrease the flooding, which damages crop production in areas, residential properties, et cetera, and causes of soil erosion in these streams, those high-quality natural areas. Um, so obviously, big impact project is near our Bystrophy Prairie, which is a Illinois Nature Preserve, which is recognized as one of the highest quality remaining, um, unfiled prairie remnants in the state of Illinois. So again, the location is really key to go in there, and this funding would allow us to take care of an area that has been challenging for us just with resource availability to do. So, um, again, it goes back to cleaning up our areas.
And we haven't had any reports or problems with beaver that we're aware of at this point.
We did check it recently.
Have you?
Yes.
Good.
Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, we go there, there's a bunch of damned up spots.
So we've got that, um, on the agenda, which was on the consent agenda. Uh, we will be traveling to Washington DC by still, and I brought it myself, with the National Recreation and Park Association to meet with congressional staff on funding of Land Water Conservation Fund, funding through the Environmental Protection Agency, uh, and health programs, block grants, et cetera. Uh, again, just to state the importance of the work that we do and to tell our story. And we'll be bringing along information as well as impact to our neighboring partners, like the Friends of Hack Attack and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and others that were dependent upon those types of services. Um, next month, I will have in front of you a legislative agenda for the year. Um, and then down in Springfield, I did send out an invite if anyone would wish to attend. Um, Park State at State Capitol is at the end of April, and there is legislation that's actively moving, um, right now, whether the House of Origin, and then they'll eventually be moving over to the other side. Um, and there are several bills that the Illinois Association of Districts has been putting forward that we call our platform bills. And one of them, uh, which would be big and part of that efficiency study that everyone had to go through was changing the park district code, Downstate Forest Preserve District Act and the Conservation District Act to increase our bid threshold. So right now, it's at 30,000, but raise it to 50,000. Again, just efficiency and effectiveness, to not have to go through all the costs and pricing of that. So that's one of them, uh, and many others that are in motion. We've been participating, um, from our planning team, Sarah Rommel and myself. Open Lands has pulled together a group of individuals across the state of Illinois, um, open space agencies, um, trail conservancy-type organizations, tourism organizations to get an interest on the Grand Illinois Trail. And our Prairie Trail, Hebron Trail, all of this connects to a larger network. And so we are preparing a sign-on communication to the governor of the importance, and again, helping to look some funding and some support as an economic driver that our trail systems have here in the state of Illinois. So, um, through Natural McHenry County and others, we're all leaning in on that. Um, the McHenry County Conservation District, I had shared this before with our spring trout with the hollows conservation areas. So we will not be truck, we will not be stocking the hollows like Atwood this year. And the team has come up with alternative that have been promoted out through social media, and, uh, just, so this flyer is available if you exit this evening. But the locations for Spring 2025, Fiskasaw, Bex Woods, Rush Creek Conservation Area, Pleasant Valley Conservation Area, and then Philpro Triple R. So again, no hollows this year for trout, but, um, obviously, that is just a temporary this year situation, and then we're working through that. So kudos to staff on, on finding a solution. And then, um, the hollows conservation area, our planning department has been working on this project, the board is very familiar with it. It's a project that has two grants that were received from Illinois Department of Natural Resources, both an OSLAD grant, Open Space Land Acquisition Development Grant, and then the Boat Access Area Development Grant. Um, the grand opening, uh, for the grand reopening of the hollows will be June 14th, which is a Saturday, um, on the Hooked on Fishing, um, will be held at 10 o'clock, and we'll have an invitation. 10 o'clock will be the ribbon cutting on that particular day. And then we are doing a special gathering, uh, county board, foundation, and our board and the leadership team on the Thursday evening prior to, kind of like we did last year at the Pleasant Valley Conservation Area with the bison, for just a meet and greet, and then a behind-the-scenes tour of that project and what's gone in today. It will be a, um, not only just a time to socialize, there will be some recreational opportunities. So anyone that wants to get out on the water, try the new accessible, um, transfer of kayaking or canoeing, um, and sea fishing. To do that. And it's just busy, we finished festival of the Sugar Maples, so again, shout out to our staff. Um, that was, we had all seasons in a matter of time. I mean, we had snow, we had, they proactively anticipated, and, and all the divisions of the district worked together. But obviously, that windstorm that came in, they had to take down all the tents, make sure that nothing was gonna fly away, and then reopen again on the Sunday. And, and so it did a good job.
Do we have much wind damage down there with anything?
Not much damage on the...
Not in that specific area, yeah.
Good.
So...
Then that Sunday, after you opened back up, that sort of snowed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just all the things that could happen. But they didn't miss a step, and, and they've been actively, uh, and again, a great job on that. uh a great job on that and.
Can you, can you go for how many? I remember we had like a thousand in the past.
That's the number.
Sorry. We will have that in our, in our report for you. And uh we'll get that to you. But I believe because of the, the one weekend, I think we also, someone had communicated, there was a glitch in the software of registration, but then he went through. So that was communicated. Um, the other thing I will say, a lot of news here, we did meet um several months ago. Uh, we had received a communication from the radio flyers for acquisition on um they, it's a club here and they had lost their grounds to which they used to fly the uh radio uh planes. And so um they reached back out there with the club president. Dave and I met with them uh just to get to know one another. And it was very good to understand just so what they, what their needs were, what they're looking for. We were able to communicate what our process has been and why we communicated as well. Had stated, but I think it provided a good conversation or dialogue. And uh we offered some suggestions. They're very focused on STEM work with aeronautics and working with the local high schools and developing that science uh type of program. So again, I thought the meeting went.
Do we have a, a plan where we'll go forward, like moving them again or?
We didn't have a set date. We just said we'd keep others, we'd keep each other, you know, and the loop of things that were going on. I did express that we will be um starting our ten-year comprehensive plan. And that's an opportunity for all stakeholder groups with needs and interests to be able to share. And part of that process is we prioritize where our resources go and.
And they needed two to four acres?
Two to four acres is what they're.
Probably flat, three flat, wow.
Yeah, not in, not entries, not in areas of canopy. Um. But it was, it was good. And just to share the different ways that if there was an interest, how it could be regulated um policy standpoint. So um, you know, certain things that could be done, just as similar ways. We looked at trails and looking at how you put e-bikes and things on our trail systems, regulation of of how things, if there was a potential to consist.
Great.
That's all I have.
Yeah, basically nothing more on the even trail or?
Well, I do have that um, well, yeah, let me go ahead and mention it now here. Um, so in your packing on session lab, last meeting, you know, we had representatives from Hebron Township and the snowmobile club was here to talk about um the gap that we have on Lang Road with the Hebron Trail, which has been, you know.
Proped that was the communication from the railroad.
From the railroad to, to kind of communicate, which had been in touch with Director of Operations, Planning and Public Safety, John Kramer. Um, so what we provided and John put together some information, Val, we had pulled some historical resources because of history of when, when the land was acquired to the building of the trail, to working with the ICC and working with the state legislature to help get some direction and traction. So um you have all the background. It's not a simple solution to what is going to be required. Then it will likely require a lot of resources and agencies involved to, to make that to, to resolve the issue.
It's a, it's a big deal.
But it will likely, yeah, predict, but you know, the staff, we've identified that there's a gap. So as we look again to the ten-year plan of prioritization of projects, it's one of those things that we're always looking for opportunities to how to, how to solve that.
Great. Okay, moving on, uh, public comment number two.
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Thank you. All right. Well, I guess uh, unless somebody else has anything to bring up, Val, you got anything?
No.
That is what we're talking about. Okay. We'll do executive session then. We have a motion?
Yep. Uh, move to, move into executive session, so into two C one. C five, purchase lease of real estate. Two C twenty-one, review of close section minutes of the open meeting.
Do we have seconds?
Second.
A law made a motion. Okay. Yeah, you ran it off. Ryan, you second?
Second.
The person moves and seconded, on all please.
Trustee Zeller. Yes. Trustee Lahey?
Yes.
Trustee Zerik?
Yes.
Secretary Wazor?
Yes.
Vice President Everard?
Yes.
President Daum?
Yes.
Hey. We'll go into executive session. We'll reconvene. We don't lose anything after that.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six thirty, seven P M.
President Daum?
Here.
Best President Everard?
Yes.
Secretary Wazor?
Yes.
Trustee Lahey?
Yes.
Trustee Zerik?
Yes.
And Trustee Daum?
Yes.
I was just going back and.
Right. Now, now may have an, obtain a motion to adjourn the meeting. That can move and seconded?
Hey, Trustee Zeller. Yes. Trustee Zerik?
Yeah.
Secretary Wazor?
Yeah.
Vice President Everard?
Yes.
Trustee Lahey?
Yes.
President Daum?
Yes. We're adjourned.
All right.